Good evening, everyone. March ninth. This committee, the whole meeting. We're going to go through budget process again today. I'm going to turn it over to the Majority Leader Frank Miola to handle the rest of the meeting.
Thank you, Councilman DeBrego. Right now, it's Thursday, March ninth. We're starting at 5:00. We're on time. The departments that we're looking into today for their budget would be the City Clerk, Revenues, Civil Service, Purchasing, IT, Assessors, Corporate Council, Youth, Mayor, Debt Department, and Benefits. We'll start with Heather Mowat, our Budget Director, and let's get to work.
Okay, so if you're okay. Go ahead. If you're okay, councilperson, what I'd like to do is start on the expense side. I know there are a couple people here that could leave once we get that done, and then we'll go into Benefits, and then hit Revenues and Debt. Okay?
Very good.
Okay. Starting on page fourteen, we have the Mayor's Office. The only thing here I want to bring to your attention is there is one opening that we're not filling, and that is for Chief of Staff. It's about eighty-nine thousand dollars. So I don't know if you have any questions as it relates to that. Okay. What wasn't listed here was the Controller's Office, but that's next in line. I don't know why that's not there, but probably my fault. And I did tell Bill and Diana, so we're not here, but that's okay. Not a lot different in this Cost Center on page fifteen.
Yeah, I got them. Thanks.
They were looking to add another position, but the mayor did not put that in there, and they were okay with that.
What position did they want to add?
Let's see here. They wanted to add a Senior Cashier.
Can I? I know that they're not here, but can you just briefly, like, why did they think that they needed another cashier?
Well, they did have a retirement this year.
Okay.
Manny Plano retired, and that's why you see money in the wage line. And so she's back part-time. She's really the person you don't hear much about, but she manages the audit. She manages the whole set of books, really. Her and Diana do. So they felt that they could use another person, but we did add a position during the year. So the mayor didn't think it was necessary, and after discussing it with the Controller, he said that they could get by.
I get complaints from constituents about it not being easy to pay your property tax on through our website. I wonder if we wouldn't be better off spending the money to make it easier to pay online from home than adding another human being?
Yeah. I've never, I don't know anybody that, we've not had any complaint up in our office, but I can definitely take a look at that.
Right. Okay.
Thank you. But other than that, there's not really anything new within the Controller's Office. Any questions? Next up is Budget. There's nothing. One person. That's it.
You.
Me. Purchasing, there again, Pam does a great job, and nothing new there.
Oh.
Assessor's Office. So today, we have Richard Maxwell with us. This year, a little bit of a change from prior years. We took care of things during the current year, but we had had a number, three people being employed down there, not four. We did have an opening which was filled. It's recently become vacant. I think you're interviewing for that position?
Putting an offer out tomorrow.
Okay, so that's still outstanding.
Is that the new person that we have is now left?
She's leaving, yes. Going over to the school.
Going over?
To the school.
Oh, one question. The only thing I do want to point out, under contractual services, the only reason the year-to-date actual is so high, and I know the department requested, just wanted whatever was the same I brought over, that was for Dave Williams when he stepped in. We needed some extra help, so I just reduced that down. Does anybody have any questions for Rich? Thank you.
Do you want us to do a reassessment? I'm just joking.
I do.
I know. You got to seriously look at his face. I do.
Three million dollars that we haven't spent on our.
Yeah.
I could spend some.
Are you allowed to use our funding to do a rebound, Heather? There's a certain percentage that could be used for unrestricted purposes, but you can't just make those decisions. You'll have to go through and make sure. You'll have to go through, and you may have to make sure what's restricted and what's not restricted. There's seven resources.
You can use three million dollars if it's not restricted.
Okay.
You know, I can't hear her answer my question when you talk over.
Why? Actually, she was not talking when I talked to you.
You were still talking while she was answering my question.
All right, come on. Let's stop here.
It makes it impossible for me to hear her.
I was just saying.
Let's be professional. Let's stop here, okay?
Go ahead.
Okay. City Clerk. City Clerk's done a great job this year of kind of reorganizing her department. Had some retirements, brought some new people in, kind of reduced salaries. We do have Thalia who retired and is back part-time. That's why we see the wage line where it is. Other than that, every, I mean, the office has been working well. Sort of Melissa, is there anything you want to add?
There was just a few things that I actually requested in the budget. One was to enclose the front end of our office, just to be in uniform with other departments. We've had some issues, you know, people coming in and whatnot that we had to deal with, and my staff has come to me multiple times feeling not safe, and they're just, they're young girls. And of course, for it to be ADA, you know, the guidelines.
Yeah, so just an update on ADA. We are in the midst of settling a lawsuit on ADA compliance as it relates to our parks and all our facilities. There's going to be quite a bit of work going on within City Hall over the next year to make us ADA compliant, and that, so that's every office. But we don't bill that out by Cost Center. It comes through our Facilities Department. And we hired a carpenter who's doing a great job doing all our work in-house, so we don't have to hire it out.
So can I, on that very issue, the half door, and this seems like such a trivial issue, the door locked that is set that you can't push it shut like you can with everything. You have to stand there and turn, so it stays open all the time. Anybody could walk through.
Yes.
Even if that were locked so that someone had to literally reach over it, would make it a little.
Yeah, I mean, my thought, obviously, was just to make it one full door, and then the girls and myself and Drew would just have to, you know, use our badge just to get through.
Absolutely.
Because people do just come right in. Even old employees, they just walk right in, and it's just.
I think that would be great. I think you should absolutely do that, but at the very least, could we get the new carpenter, like, to spend half an hour fixing that door up?
Yep.
It's going to be like the Controller's Office. That's what I.
Yes. Oh, yeah, yeah. No, absolutely. I think that's great.
Right, right. And the other thing that I did want to bring up is with the hospital opening, I believe it's on October, I think, right?
October. Yep, October thirtieth.
Moving towards 2024, I'm going to have to hire a deputy register because, you know, I'm the deputy register now. He's my deputy, and for me to take time off and work around him and my register is just, it's impossible. So, you know, we're going to be handling all the births, so I'm definitely going to need another full-time employee there. So, I mean, it has to.
I don't know how many births they actually do.
Yeah, what would be the amount, the salary amount?
How many babies are born in St. Luke's right now? Do we know? Anybody know?
I mean, that's my daughter.
Yes, sure.
Yeah, she could.
She's a delivery nurse. Wow.
At St. Luke's?
Well, she's a traveling nurse, but she worked there for years, and she still works there for years.
I mean, do they have a big L and D there? No. That's the question I would want to know.
Real-time info. I can't believe it.
They deliver five or six a day minimum. You also got to remember, out of respect for it, as well as deaths.
Yes.
Yeah.
And we're going to be a regional hospital, so we're going to get Madison County people. You're going to get.
That's true.
Jefferson County. We're going to get all those different.
Yeah, and I just have her and then myself, so a lot of times I'm pulled away from my desk, and he's taking care of everything because I'm at her desk. And just a few of the things I just want to go over. We, quarterly, we update E-codes. So we have on E-codes 2018, 2020, 2021, and 2022 council proceedings. So those are all up, and we're working on 2019. And we did move to having Staples print our books. So this year, this is the first time we got a quote for like eight hundred dollars, right? Eight hundred dollars for fourteen copies, so we'll just be, we'll bind them. They're going to punch holes and do all that because our copier can't.
So that'll be for 2022, right?
That's for, that's going to be for this book, yes. We just got quoted for that book and then going forward.
So do we, do we have books for eighteen and nineteen?
We didn't print them yet. We just printed one, just our copy.
Right.
So we'll probably have them make copies of that, too.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. And that's, that's pretty much, I mean, I do have what we brought in for the births and deaths for 2022, the year of 22. So with the.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Yeah. So she says less than two thousand, probably between, probably between fourteen hundred and sixteen.
I thought it was around fifteen. Yeah. It's a lot for one person to.
That's a lot of certificates.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, we do that amount indeed.
Yeah. So, I mean, with, with the marriage, births, and deaths, we did deaths last year. We did five thousand six hundred ninety-nine, and with births, we did one thousand seven forty-nine, just printing, like, the births last year.
That's for St. Eve's only, right? St. Eve's.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
And some facts done, some facts done. So, yeah, so I just kind of wanted to let you guys know that. That's it. Any other questions?
Not only are you doing your job, you're doing the job trying to get those books accomplished that you're not responsible for.
Yeah, and I mean, he's, I mean, I have to say, he's more tech savvy with that, so he's, he's been doing all that. Drew's been doing pretty much indexing it and all that, so, and he's been doing a great job with that.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much. Being caught up in that is going to be really good.
Yeah.
Okay, next up, I do want to mention, Bill and Lori will be staying with us after everybody else leaves to go through Benefits. So we're going to do Corp Counsel's Office now. Don't know if you have any questions for Bill. He did ask for a little bit more contractual, which we cut down, but we did discuss it with him.
Shocking.
Shocking. But, you know, we've put quite a bit of money away for some of our lawsuits. I work pretty closely with Zach Orin to come up with reasonable estimates. So the majority of our lawsuits that are outstanding right now that we feel that we might be in jeopardy of losing, we have, we have quite a bit of money put away. So that's the good news. Okay. Next up is Civil Service. Lori's here, of course. Lori is our complete benefits coordinator, administrator. I keep getting.
Sure.
Which one is it? I keep, I keep.
Just not late for me.
Oh, yes. Okay. And head of our Civil Service Secretary. She manages, also manages the School District's Civil Service. So she's a pretty busy person. She does have an assistant in the office, a secretary or administrative assistant, I guess, Jennifer. And so she does manage the mail in her office also. So I don't know if you have any questions for Lori as it relates to Civil Service, mail, or human resources.
So do we get compensated by the School District for the civil service that we do?
We do. We do. When we go over revenues, I'll.
We do. They pay for half of every dollar we sign.
Okay.
Laura, who regulates the cost? We're on page nineteen. Who regulates the cost for charging for the testing and everything?
You guys set the fees for what we charge for exams.
Okay.
And right now, it's twenty-five dollars for open competitive exams and fifty dollars for any uniform, so police, fire, open competitive war promotions, and that seems to be.
Is that reasonable right now for you?
It is.
You think so? Okay. There's no increase required?
No.
Okay.
No. And we're at an all-time low with people signing up for exams. We had eight exams that we gave last weekend, and there was only the provisional people had signed up. And we put these exam announcements on D. We put them on our website. We circulate them to every agency we can think of, and the city churches. Yeah, we post them everywhere, but we're not getting big crowds of people anymore, so.
Thank you for doing all that work. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Any other questions for Lori?
And if anybody, just something interesting to note, the mailroom, by the mailroom, we process incoming mail, but all of our outgoing mail still goes to the county, and we get a much reduced rate using their pre-sorted rates. So we save, by using their postage, we save probably, the last time I checked, it was about sixteen thousand dollars a year in postage.
Wonderful.
Yeah.
Thank you, Lauren. Thank you.
Any other questions for Lori? Okay. On page twenty-three, we have IT. We have Frank Matolo here with us, who does a great job at managing our IT department. As you may recall, we have, we have two employees in that department, but we do vendor out, contract out with a service that comes in and provides higher, higher skill sets as it relates to networking. I think we have an individual full-time down at the police station, and then we have an individual up here full-time that manages fire and City Hall, DPW and youth and whatever other facilities we have out there. There again, nothing hugely unusual here. We did see an increase in our contractual, that service, that every year we have a mandated increase. We just awarded it for another two years several months ago. So I don't know if anybody has any questions for Frank?
I do.
Sure.
So fairly recently, I went to the website, and it was down because its security certificate had lapsed. Have we got that fixed?
Yeah, that happens within the same day.
Okay, great.
Yeah. That happens within the same day.
I mean, I could get on, but I had to go around the security.
Yeah, we can't buy those certificates out enough in advance. They don't allow that.
Oh, okay.
So we have to buy them usually in one or three increments, whatever, whatever the hosting company allows, the registrar allows for that.
All right.
We'd like to buy them so they would come all due at the same time. I could plan for that, but.
Right.
It just doesn't work that. There's a lot of certificates on the site.
Okay. All right.
And I do, I do want to mention one other thing. Frank's been pretty busy the past couple months. We are going to be installing a new telephone system. Last time we installed it was the last time I was here.
Back when you were in high school, sorry?
Yeah, that's it, yeah, high school. And it's going to be tied into our computers. So we're going to be seeing, even though we have telephone expenses, I did reduce it in some areas in here, we're going to see our telephone expenses coming down. And so we're pretty excited about that. We think, like, in a month or so?
I would say a month and a half.
Month and a half, yeah. All our phones have showed up. We just need to get them all installed, and they'll be everywhere, so we're excited.
I have a question on the, one last one for Frank. I see that education and training, you guys requested twenty thousand? Or is that, wait?
The reason, yes.
Yeah, what was the original goal?
The reason for that is we needed to provide security awareness training, and part of the security awareness training would be penetration testing by an authorized outside firm. COVID kind of squashed all that, so that money was in there, but it never really got expended correctly. We still need to do the security awareness training. We still need to have the penetration testing done. So we have to know what people are vulnerable for before we do the awareness training, so we can key in on those topics. So that's why I requested that amount, but it really got reduced. I imagine we can talk about that.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions for Frank? Okay. If we could turn to page fifty-one, we have Chet Licanti here. Chet has taken over for Lonnie Jenkins, if you're not aware, and been very active. You may recall, a couple of months ago, you all, I believe it came to the Common Council, we advertised a lifeguard program. That was his initiative. His initiative coming up, and I think I mentioned this the other night, which Frank brought up the pools and the saltwater. Chet took it upon himself because we had such problems with the chlorination of our pools last year. And as I mentioned, the fire department, they did a fantastic job, stepped in to help. We just couldn't buy bulk chlorine liquid. And so now we're going to be going to a pallet, and we're getting a.
He says the pallet, the chlorine pallets are most productive, but maybe you want to contemplate and get into the salters. They're less maintenance?
Yeah, it's a lot more money.
The initial investment is, but the chlorine that you're saving on because of cost of chlorine is.
Well, so no, we're using tablets now.
Yeah.
So the system, the system's actually cheaper. The tablets are way cheaper.
Are they?
So this year, we would tend to spend, I think, thirty-six thousand dollars projected is what we'll spend on chlorine.
Just, just.
Just, just the chlorine.
Does that count on the other side and the other stuff?
No, that's not counting that. That stuff actually is fairly cheaper, too. I mean, a pallet of the chloro, the flakes is maybe three hundred bucks for a.
Do we have dispensers there to dispense it, or do we have to go there and maintain it?
No. So we're getting a dispenser at each site. It's going in the basement, which is easier.
Okay.
So all our chlorine is outside in the shed.
Okay.
Along with not being able to get the chlorine.
It was very difficult last year to get chlorine.
There's enough tablets that we can, we can probably buy two years' worth, which we don't need, but we're getting a full year's worth of tablets for this year, so we'll never have a problem. If we do happen to run low, he guarantees us he'll have enough for us if we happen to run low, which we won't.
So tablets are what you want to get in, just no liquid chlorine?
We're going to, we're keeping both systems just in case.
Okay, because I know we got the liquid system.
We still have the liquid systems. We're not going to do away with it, no.
Okay.
So, I mean, I'm kind of curious, because like in, it must be in bulk, it must be different, but like in hall pools, okay, the tablets are through the roof, and the liquid chlorine is cheap.
So we're buying, we're buying in bulk, so we're getting a decent deal.
He says thirty-six thousand.
But the whole, don't forget, the whole tablets, you're getting a different tablet. I mean, I understand. We're getting a three and a quarter inch tablet. You guys are probably.
I use the hockey puck.
Yeah. Also, you might be using the same. Our.
The hockey puck. But I mean, they used to be, they used to be for twenty-five pounds. They used to be like seventy-nine or eighty-nine dollars, or like almost two hundred.
So it's going to cost us sixty thousand seven hundred forty-one dollars and, I think, forty-one cents just for the tablets. So we're saving twenty thousand dollars. Just the initial cost for this is going to be a little more expensive to start it up, but actually, it's only going to be about twelve thousand dollars more expensive for everything for this year than just buying the chlorine.
Did you ever bid out, bid out the saltar units for the pools yet?
No.
When you had the opportunity, is it possible you could bid out the saltar units to see what they come to?
So would the salt trial, Dave Short's going to be the one that would do that, but that being said, it is harder to maintain than it is to do with the tablets.
The salters are?
Yeah. So I'll look into it more. I will. And I'll get back to you.
I'll tell you what, even our old Congressman, Anthony Brindisi, got the same saltar unit that I got, and.
Right.
I'll tell you what, it's least maintenance as possible.
Well, yeah, don't forget. How many gallons is your pool?
It's sixteen by thirty-six.
So it's probably about fourteen thousand gallons?
Yeah.
So, so all three pools combined, you have a million gallons.
Like I said, you get different units.
Yeah.
But I'm just, the startup and the cost of the salt is a lot cheaper because you're talking seven dollars a bag for a bag of salt versus one or two tablets, which are almost seven dollars now. So just contemplate.
Yeah, no, I will. I'll look at it. I will. Absolutely.
Sorry.
No, that's okay.
I got one here.
Right, yes.
Are you leaving the Director of Recreation? That's no longer going to exist. I know there's not a salary line item there.
So Chet's taken over, but he's keeping his CSEA title, so we unfunded it. We are looking perhaps to fund another type of position. We're not ready yet. We're looking at classifications. It was not included here, and we know that if we do that, we're going to have to have revenues to cover that cost, so we're working on that. So you're going to be hearing.
You're not interested in getting promoted to the Director?
So.
I know it's a non-Civil Service position, right?
I would.
You're in a CSEA position now?
I would actually lose money.
Hmm?
I would lose money.
Yeah.
And I love my job. I really do. I mean, I'm vested now, and I did request a raise, and the mayor did, I think, approve it in there. So, I mean, I guess the Common Council has to approve it, so even if I didn't, I'm happy where I'm at.
All right.
Really not going to lie. I mean, I would, if I took that position, I'd lose, and then obviously, a new mayor comes in, I could be susceptible to be like, hey, I don't like Chet Licanti. He's gone.
Right. This is a more secure position because it's.
Not that, not that you, Celeste.
I understand. So we're going to leave that unfunded.
[laughter]
We're going to leave it unfunded, and he's going to wear two hats for a while.
I promise, if you move over to Cal, I'll never fire you.
So that, that being said, not really. We did hire Keith Brown. Keith is a recreation specialist. I have Janine Johnson, who's also in there, who Janine took on, Janine and Keith took on bigger roles.
Okay.
Janine actually took on more than anybody. She's doing a lot more, and it's not a ton more work, but it's very manageable. It's what we got. And like Heather said, we're going to try to add. We're just trying to figure out what we want to call it and what it's going to be. Then more or less, maybe a rec manager of some sort.
Okay.
But it'll definitely be, we're good where we're at right now.
All right. That's all. Thank you.
I know we went over pools and the rec center when Dave was here with us last week, so. Does anybody have any questions, more questions for Chet? Okay.
Do you?
Yeah. You guys are all set.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Appreciate it.
No, not you. You're sitting right here with me.
I thought I'd try.
You're lovely, Brian.
Okay, page fifty-four is Benefits. So last week, there were some questions and confusion, and so I wanted to.
Thank you, Frank.
I wanted to.
Thanks, John.
Provide this spreadsheet.
Round spreadsheet.
Yes.
All right, which spreadsheet do we have?
The big one, the big one, yes.
The one calling me.
So every year, every year, Lori and I begin an exhaustive review of healthcare. She really gets me a lot of data, and we get data from Exelis. So what you don't see on this spreadsheet is all the, these are all formula-driven. I know everybody's healthcare plan. I know what they contribute. I know everybody's healthcare plan. I know what they contribute. I know what their HRA or HSA is. And it's all tied into this. And yesterday, actually Josh Harrington, our PBA president, came up and spent quite a bit of time with me going through the spreadsheet because someone had shared with him that we were putting a contribution against HRAs and HSAs, which just wasn't even true. I don't know where that came from. But he wanted to see how my spreadsheet was tied in, how the numbers were tied into the budget. So he seemed to be quite pleased because everything is formula driven and he could see that it wasn't being charged against a member's contribution. So-
Can you just explain what you mean by formula driven there?
It's an Excel spreadsheet. So if you, if you were to come up to my office, you can look at the first line here where it says CSEA, another city, you see current healthy blue high deductible.
Yep.
Every person that that rate is charged to is listed. You could see everybody's name. You can see if they have an HRA or an HSA. You can see what their contribution is. Just like the member contribution of 107,000, you would see that number cumulated by individual.
Okay.
Okay, so it's brought over. I don't force any of those numbers. Everything is brought over from a spreadsheet.
Okay.
Okay. So, yep, okay. So when we look at CSEA, and I, like I said, if you look at page 54 of your budget, you see the total CSEA down at the bottom here on our healthcare analysis of 1,916,768. And that's the exact number that you see over on page 54.
Where are you on page 54?
Down at the bottom, under general city employee benefits.
Medical, 1916,768.
Yep, yep. Now I'm going to explain to you what, where the self-insurance comes in. When you go back to my spreadsheet, not all of this is self-insurance. There's dental, there's vision. We have in-lu-avs, which means if you choose not to take health insurance, we pay you a certain amount of money, whether it's family or single care. We have HRAs. HRAs are not self-insurance. They're not.
That is, he, he, health?
Health, uh-
Something.
Health reimbursement arrangement.
Health reimbursement arrangement.
Yep. So we do not put the contribution towards that. So because the Exelis and the self-insurance is also driven with contributions, we don't aggregate that in there. So if you were to take a look at the last page of your budget, because that was all the big question last week, how, where do these numbers derive from?
Page 101?
Yes.
Yep, yep.
And it's also on the second to the last page of our spreadsheet here, which goes on to the third sheet. If you were to add up, and I've already done it for you on the third, on the third page, under CSEA, our current healthy blue deductible for currents for retirees and the retiree EPO as matched on the third page of our spreadsheet, okay? You would see that number, 1,570,548.
So these are on page 101 of the budget?
Yep.
Those are the amounts that each of those employee groups is contributing. That's their, and the rate, and the rate. So we have, we talked about raising the rate by which we charge each person. So by what, I mean, I remember what the individual was right now with the family plan. Is it 20%?
Yeah.
No, that's, that's a member contribution, right? But there's a rate by which we charge the fund that we expect the cost of the plan to be. Okay. Okay. So think of it like, like health insurance. Whatever the health insurance rate is we go.
So when we, when we began with that, with the self-insurance, if we had left everything in the general fund, if there were underages or overages for the, for the self-insurance, it would all just go through our regular fund balance. And we didn't want to do that. That's not, that's not proper accounting. We have a separate subgroup for the self-insurance. Not everybody is under self-insurance. We have DPW, all of them as Teamsters. We have a couple of other Teamsters sprinkled through here. So what, what we do is we bring that amount of money, or it should be, coming over into this fund. So it's segregated.
Right.
So each year, we're going to see whether there's a loss or a surplus.
So the reason that you, that it wouldn't be good accounting is because you can't see those patterns over time.
That's right.
Right? So if you, and it's also going to make your general fund balance bounce around in a way which doesn't actually indicate what your general fund balance is really doing.
Right. But it's also that separate, that separate subgroup of people, right, that are paying, well, it's not just about paying contributions, but anybody that's into self-insurance themselves.
And over time, you want to see how that, in order to know whether it's working.
Right. So we increased rates, we're proposing to increase rates through this budget by 30%. If I, I mean, if I had a question, am I being charged properly, right? Because that 30% is also going against our contribution. The contribution's going up by 30%. You want to have it segregated somewhere so that it's clear to everyone. And I will tell you, I've been working with the controller department because they, the office, because they had not been aggregating it that way, even though it was budgeted that way. We actually just got today the breakouts. It'd been put against the general fund, fire, police and all of that. But you'll see that updated like soon.
Okay, thank you.
So I don't know what other questions you might have on this. I mean, it's, it's, like I said, it's pretty formatted. I mean, Lori spends a great deal of time.
I have one question.
Oh, sure.
You know, going back to 101, I'm just looking, I mean, please, I know it's 4 million and the police are doing 507,000 per contribution. If the fire does, you know, they do somehow get their contracts settled, is that you going to jack it up to about 500, same?
If, if they were to pay 20%, yes. All of police pays 20%. Three or four years ago, when we settled the contract with police, we gave, what was negotiated was a more of a, of a raise, I want to say it was like 4.5 or 4.25. In return, they gave us 20%. That, that was the negotiation.
So it could be a possibility that that's going to arise. I mean, if they do-
Yes.
Arbitration.
Yes.
It could be 20%, no greater than 20%?
We don't have anyone over 20% here.
Okay.
But that's, it doesn't matter. The contribution is still increased depending on what the total amount is.
Whatever the rate is, yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions on the self-insurance portion?
So, sorry, I know I'm just repeating.
That's okay.
So what Sam just said, the amount that they pay may go up, but the percentage that they'll, and that's because healthcare costs go up.
Right.
But the, the percentage that they pay 20%, we don't have anybody paying more than 20%. But that, the absolute amount you may pay goes up.
So if you look at last year's budget compared to this year's budget, for the police department, for example, they're paying, I think, like 361,000. This year, their contribution went up to like 531,000. So they have 20%.
So 30%.
And if you can get into the base diamond, and this is another thing that's going to be very convoluted when looking at a sheet like this, like your utilization rates are going to be utilization rates. Right? Like the fire department can be high one year, city health can be high another year, DPW can be high another year, police could be high the other. Like it doesn't make a difference. Your utilization rates vary. The problem that we have here, and this is, and this is going to be a major detriment, is that if the city does not settle with the fire department, okay, that 1.5 million dollars will have to be made up in the budget because it'll go from a self-insurance plan back to the original plan. So whereas the police department had negotiated in good faith with the city for a 20% contribution, will now be going back to maybe say their, their contribution went from 170 a month to 500 dollars a month because now they're going back to the old plan. Like somewhere and somehow that, that is going to have to be made up on that budget. So I mean, utilization, anybody can talk about that every day, right? Like again, that, that changes on a varied basis. The fact remains that this budget is going to be dependent on whether or not the city and the sites negotiate with the fire department, which is going to be a huge detriment not only to the police department, but CSEA as well.
Yes.
So can you explain to me, that was very, very well done, by the way, too. So can you explain to me, you keep, we keep telling us about how self-insurance saved money and explain to me what, if we didn't go to health, self-insured and we stayed where we were, can you tell me the difference on where the rates would have went up and what it would have been? Where did the, where did this save us money when the rates are way higher? And what is the reason? And what is the reason that the rates are so high?
Okay. Good question. So let's talk about, let's talk about COVID. Let's talk before we get into the rates. So we, we've had a number of high claimants this year, more than we've ever had before. A lot of serious illness, a lot of conjectures as to why do we have more serious illness this year than others? It's all, we can never tell. Is it related to preventative screenings? I don't know. I mean, we don't get in and ask those questions. But there's a lot of conjecture out there that perhaps that's it. Can't tell you it is or it isn't. But when you go to look at full insurance, full insurance is based on what they call an experience rating. So they look back before they look forward. So they look back and say, we think, you know, that whatever reason, we've seen all these claims in these period of years. And then they use that as a basis to say, okay, we think healthcare is going to go up. Or they look at industry, industry changes. Self-insurance is different. What the claim is, we pay. We have to pay within, I believe, is it 72 hours, Lori?
I think it's weekly they send files.
Weekly, weekly. We have to pay it when the claim comes in. There's no profit to it. But there's an administrative charge, right? And that was part of my memo. There's an administrative charge to do that. There's bookkeeping. Exelis does that for us. There is a stop-loss insurance policy. We talked about that too in my memo, where it's, it helps us with these extra high claimants if they become so high. What if we had a $5 million claim, right? That, that policy kicks in over a certain dollar number. So it's-
Individually, or is it like a family plan? Does the, does it kick in for each, so there's a cap on it, okay? And then it kicks in, then a regular insurance policy kicks in. Does that kick in for an individual? Or does it have to kick in?
Whatever the claim is.
So like when you have a family plan, it goes by your deductible. Is it by every person? So what, God forbid I had cancer-
Yeah.
And you had to take care of me. Got to the certain point, when I got to that amount, the insurance plan would kick in for me.
Yes.
It's not like something where the whole city-
You wouldn't know it though. You wouldn't know.
No, I wouldn't know. But it's not where the whole city has to get a certain level and then it kicks in.
But Joe, that's the point, that part of the utilization rate does come in. Like your utilization rate can vary, right? Like nobody could be sick for one year. That means your utilization rate is not going to be higher where every other department and site-
Right. But how much money did this save us being self-insured?
700,000.
700.
So it would have been higher if we didn't go self-insured.
No.
Yes.
Well, here's, here's the thing. I mean, you got to go back to the fact of being on that self-insurance plan, or the self-insurance plan compared to what the old plan was. I, I think that, I think, what was the highest increase that the city's had? Was it like 17, 17%?
I don't know. I need to go back and-
I mean, those are numbers that you have to look at. Obviously, there was a, there was a reason that the city wanted to go to a self-insurance plan. So that's, that's not the debate here, which I, I'm not going to disagree, right? If the city wants to go to the self-insurance plan because they think that there's a savings, that's fine. The problem is, is that you still have one department that's out of a self-
Right, I'm not, yeah, I'm not, okay. I just want to understand. Yeah, but I want to understand it. I'm not caring. I understand the fire department. I understand all that.
But it has nothing to do with just the fire department. It affects every union.
If it's not settled, we know that. But I'm just asking how the policy works. I know, I know what you're saying. I agree with you. But I'm just saying-
You just asked about 17%.
Yes, that's what I'm, yes. So that's-
I mean, give the explanation then. That's what the increase was, was 17%. She just said she didn't know.
But can I, can I ask-
You asked, what was the highest, what was the highest? What was the highest? I don't know. I don't know the past 20 years. I don't, I don't-
Okay, so it was, it was- So can I, can I ask a question? I think it's still related to this. So, all right, we, we had a big year. And you were saying, we, we don't know why, right? We can speculate that it had to do with COVID. People didn't want to go to the doctors. And so a lot of stuff got put off, right? But we're speculating. Are there any other, like, what are, what are the comparable groups, like other cities or other self-insurance? Is there evidence that outside of just sort of our employees?
Yes.
That health insurance costs went up across the board for everybody?
Yes. Well, claims went up across the board. The claims went up.
Right. So that, so our experience of having claims suddenly go up post-COVID is, matches on to what the world is like, right?
Yes. But I will say, Anaronda Financial Services, who's been doing our work for quite a few years, they've never seen our city go, have this many claims.
Okay.
Okay, or the hype of the claims that we're seeing.
Right. But if our speculation is that in some way or other, it has to do with COVID. And of course, because nobody, we've never experienced COVID before either, right? It's been 100 years since we had a dual pandemic, to knock our heads around. If we're speculating that it's because of that, then what I want to know is, are claims up in other small cities, in large companies?
They are.
And anybody who has, what do we have, 450 employees or so, something like that, 500 employees? And you're saying that, yes, they are.
Yes.
So claims are up in something like one of the large SUNY schools that has 500 employees or-
All I can tell you is, all I can tell you is what Anaronda, who's our healthcare broker, right there, that wants to provide skill set, that's what they're seeing in their pools.
Right.
In their pools.
And they have other pools to compare us to. Right. Okay. So it's not self-insurance that drove the claims up.
No.
It's, it's just a fact of the world that drove the claims up.
And every municipality is moving towards self-insurance to save money for their tax pay.
As we should. I'm, I don't want to pay-
And what we're trying to do is get every department in line for the savings.
I, yeah, yeah. I'm all for it. I'm all for denying Exelis' profit.
And the only thing that I will say is, here's the issue that, here's the issue too. I mean, and you look at the contribution, right? Like now the supplement for whoever's contributing that 20% is now making up for whatever that increase could be based on, whatever the utilization may be, so on and so forth. Whereas, and I guess this is, this is the question that you have to ask, and maybe it's here nor there, right? Like, or to a self-insurance plan, like you can't compare, we wouldn't be, let's just put it like this, we wouldn't be talking about going back to an old plan if every department was in a self-insurance plan, right? Like that's, that's the issue at hand here. Everybody passed the budget last year. That was, that was, that was included. It was the first year. Then the arbitrator came in and ruled that the city was not, did not act in good faith in the contract negotiation. So I don't think any of this discussion would be happening had the city agreed to settle a contract with the fire department and not go against, you know, now an arbitrator had ruled in the, in the fire department's favor towards this. This is the issue at hand here. And that's why it's even being brought up to the fact of whether the self-insurance plan or the old plan was, was about to happen.
That makes sense to me, Sam. It does. But I guess there's an assumption in there, and I don't want us to go down this rabbit hole, but there's an assumption in there that we haven't settled the fire contract and it's the city's fault. And that rather than, I don't know why they haven't, you know, as Frank had said, he wasn't in the room, I wasn't in the room. We don't know where the sticking point is. And we don't know that it's with the administration, or with the union, or with both.
Right. So you've just got a memo from Ron, I mean, to interrupt you, but you've just got a memo from Ron Dunn that kind of explains that this, and then you just got your email, and I know you had a-
Yeah, I have, right.
So that, but that's all I'm saying is that it gives a real explanation that there's no going back. There's no such thing as appeal. They have ruled that the city did not act in good faith with the fire department. Hence the reason why they either have to come to a decision of either going from a self-insurance plan or changing that from a regular plan to a self-insurance plan, or they will be held in contempt that December 31st, that December 31st deadline. So it's not, it's not here nor there. Whether we think it's the administration's fault, whether we think it's the fire department's fault, like they have to come to a decision, plain and simple. Because I mean, that, that is going to be what penalizes the city budget. I think that we finally got the figure to 1.8 million dollars.
They beat, they beat both the city and the fire department, correct?
Let's hold on.
Yeah. So if you look also, there was another letter from Tommy Carcon, that, President Carcon, that also gave the city another option that said, hey, listen, this is what we would be willing to negotiate on. Here's this. Can you give us a decision before the budget's passed so that it doesn't affect the budget? And I think that you'll see like a snowball effect from other departments actually chiming in as well. Because it's, I mean, the meeting on Tuesday wasn't a well-attended meeting, but I think that a lot came out of it. And I think that ever, like the police department doesn't want to have to go back to their membership and say, hey, listen, I know that you guys just agreed to a self-insurance plan last year, but unfortunately, because, you know, city and fire department are going to come together to come to an agreement, now you're going to have to go back to that old plan.
Okay, everything that we do, the agreement's out of our hand. You know that. It's between the PB, it's between the union for the fire department, the union. Everybody keeps on saying fire department.
The union, right.
Let's get, let's get, we don't know what the guys actually are supporting within the fire department. We don't know if this union proposes what they want. They never Let's get, let's get, we don't know what the guys actually are supporting within the fire department, we don't know if this union proposal is what they want, they never brought it to the table, number one. Number two, Bill, can you, can you specify the appeal of the decision? Can you enlighten Mrs. Cosmo Testa on that, please? Hold on one second, hold on one second.
Did I finish with the floor, because I wasn't talking, I just got one more point that I wanted to make before, really, really briefly. And this is my point to that. So say the city goes through the process, through the appeal process, right? We already know that the increase is going to be that one point eight million dollars, right? Say that the, that the Corporation Council does lose that appeal against the city. This is where the council is now involved in the budget that they pass, because now the budget's going to be at a one point eight million dollar deficit with everybody going back to that plan. So yes, although we're not in the room negotiating at that table, the city will be held in contempt, and we knew we passed the budget without that one point eight million dollars being in there to, to supplement that possible increase if the, if the city decides not to settle with the fire department.
Now, now, would you guys explain, Mrs. Cosmo Testa, the appeal process, so they understand?
Certainly, so, as you-
And I wish you would have came when the fire department was here.
Samantha, would you let me?
No, I know, but that's all I'm saying, it would have been nice to have that back and forth, where you could have understood it from one side and not just the city's side, because I already figured we know that the city's standpoint is, is they can do the process.
Please, go ahead.
Yeah, one of the problems, we can't debate with the union, because he's represented by an attorney, okay? So we can't sit and debate, so that's one of the reasons we don't go to the meetings, is because that's what, you know, that's not going to go well for us, okay? We shouldn't be doing that. But to get to counsel person's point, so the arbitration that was held, that they ruled that basically by December thirty-first, we have to come to an agreement, go from there, okay? Let's be clear, and it's in litigation, so we don't like to comment on it, but I just want to give everyone an idea, okay?
But it is in litigation.
It is, because we never anticipated to win when we decided and mapped out our strategy five, six months ago, that we would ever win at Purb, okay? When I show you some of the decisions from Purb, it, it'll make your head turn, all right, of what, of what happens with Purb, okay? We never anticipated winning at Purb. We anticipate Public Employee Relations Board-
So Public Employees Relations-
So that's, that's where the first step is, Joe, okay? You have to go to them, so that's, so the, so the fire department filed basically grievance, we arbitrated it, we lost, we knew that was going to happen. Our position is that we, our position is that with an Article seventy-five, okay, in Supreme Court, that's where we're going to be successful, and actually in the appellate division, that's where actually we think we're going to be successful, because it is a very good question of law. We actually consulted outside counsel on this as well, they believe the same thing we do, all right, that we're going to be very successful, not very, we're going to be successful on this. That's what come, where, we were okay with Purb decision, in fact, it was a little more favorable than we thought it would have been, you know, given us a December thirty-first, but we are in the preparation of filing for the Article seventy-five, which would go to Supreme Court. Supreme Court's our locals, I shouldn't say locals, New York Supreme Court, but it's one of our local judges around here would go to, all right? And then it would be whoever, whoever loses on that can go to Rochester, okay, the fourth department, and after that, the Court of Appeal, so there's a couple of processes.
What is your timeline?
So, let me just ask this question.
It's up to the union, because they have to-
But are you almost finished with your summary?
Yeah, I was just going to answer Frank.
Okay.
So, it's up to the union, because they have to actually file to confirm the award, they've never done that, so we're just waiting for them.
Wait a minute, same.
No, if they confirm the award, then we can do that, we can't, we can't do anything until they confirm the award. Which I'm sure they will do now.
You know, when you deal with courts, it could be a long, it could be after December thirty-first, correct?
Yeah.
Right, so, you'd have to follow the Purb ruling-
Or get a stay.
Until you get a decision from a higher court.
Or get a stay.
Yes.
Or get a stay.
A stay means everything stays the same.
Which is probably what we would do.
Oh, oh, so, Councilman to bring? Uh, Joey?
Just, just one thing. So, this has been going on for four years, back and forth, and you guys, you still want to keep going and fighting it? Get in a room, lock yourself in and saddle it. What are we doing, Bill? Come on.
Can I, can I just, because I wasn't allowed to answer the counsel person's question.
I apologize.
Okay, but I think this is relevant. You asked the question, you know, what it, what is it that we're, we're holding up? What's the holdup, right?
Did I?
Something to that effect, I didn't-
We don't, we don't know what the holdup is. Just, that's what we said, that's it, you asked it.
Yeah, okay.
Just let her answer, just whatever, just-
What's the holdup? And you're asking the same question. The mayor feels very strongly about something.
I, I was trying to assume that it's not either, that it's not the mayor's holdup. I was trying to leave it as an open question, who's holding it up?
Yeah.
Listen, the mayor knows where every roll of toilet paper goes on in this building. If he wanted to settle a contract, it would have been settled.
So let me just finish, let me, let me finish.
Joyce, please let us know.
So the mayor, the mayor, the mayor felt strongly and feels strongly that the fire department should contribute toward health, towards healthcare.
You mean the fire department unions?
Fire department unions, excuse me.
Please let's stay away from the department itself.
Yes, yes, you're right. That the union should be paying towards their healthcare.
Like all of our other employees?
Like all our other employees. Normally, I'm not allowed to talk about this, but because we're in arbitration at this point, I am.
Yeah, we can.
Okay? Um, you've seen the proposals from both sides. He, he would like some kind of contribution towards healthcare.
But it wasn't the, the last proposal.
Right.
But the last proposed one is the one that was in arbitration, right?
No.
No?
No, okay.
I want to ask you a question. Because you're talking about two years out.
But, but, but that, that, that is the, that is the issue. I mean, okay, numbers go back and forth, is it three percent or five percent? We had the same issue with the police department, the mayor helped firm, they came to the table, they were willing to contribute, and in return, right, the percentage of raises over the next couple of years went up, to help offset that twenty, that twenty percent of their-
Which helps also the retirement, too, also make-
Yes, yes.
So, can I, can I just-
So, I just wanted to respond to Joe, okay?
As soon as he's done responding, yes.
Okay, so Joe, that's a good question, I know you talked about that last time I was here, that it's been going on for four years. So I, what I was trying to explain before to you, that was that, since two thousand eighteen, our negotiating team, okay, they've had between ten to fifteen negotiations with the union, they've had three mediation sessions, can't come to an agreement. So they've tried over all these years, Joe, to get this done, all right? And with the most recent proposal, from my understanding, from what I, what I've been told, I haven't seen the most recent proposal from President Carcon, I, I guess the email today, I didn't get one, but-
Yes, this one.
But I believe that the union, what they're demanding in that one is greater than what the savings would be with self-insurance. So, so the, the problem is that what they want is more than what we'd save, which, was that right here?
Yeah.
I'll read, I'm going to read it into the-
They got it. So, so we have been trying to do that, now the, and now, Joe, now the arbitration is now set for May eighth and, and or tenth, I believe it is, so we're just going to go to the arbitration and go from there. And I believe from the recent information we got from Ron Dunn, I did receive an email, is that they're prepared for arbitration too, so, there's no more negotiating, from my understanding.
Okay, yeah, Samantha, you got it?
Okay, sure, so I'm going to read a couple of things that we got today into the record. So it says, Dear Mr. Paul Marion, this is from President Carcon. I write as President of IFF Local Thirty-Two with a new proposal to resolve the contract negotiation, negotiations, while, while also providing certainty and stability to the current city budget process. As you know, an impartial arbitrator has issued a decision finding the city, that the city violated collective bargaining agreement, which was the CBA, when it interilaterally moved the firefighters from a contractually required commercial health insurance to self-insurance. The arbitrator held that the contract language required that any change to self-insurance was conditioned on the union's agreement. The arbitrator also held that by unanimity, oh God, I'm not even going to get into this, acting, the city was seeking to gain an advantage in the contract negotiations by ignoring the requirement for an agreement. The arbitrator described this as the city took away a bargaining chip from the union during their negotiations. The arbitrator then ordered that the city restore the prior health insurance terms unless the parties resolved the issue in negotiations. The award provides that parties until December thirty-first, two thousand thirty-three, or two thousand twenty-three, for that agreement to be completed, or the order requires the restoration of a commercial health insurance plan detailed in the collective bargaining agreement. And that was also confirmed from Josh Harrington, who was, was the PB president during their, during their discussions with the healthcare committee. I write today to make a proposal consistent with that award, and doing so, we give the city a path to continue the self-insurance model without disruption, reach agreement with the firefighters regarding salary increases consistent with other city unions, with, with other city unions have already received, and provide a certainty in the budget process in the financially responsible way. Attached is a summary sheet explaining the proposal. The primary advantage of an agreement for the city is that the union will allow the city to go forward with the self-insurance plan and move all firefighters to the high deductible plan. The city budget officer calculated the annual savings to the city of the move to self-insurance at five hundred thousand dollars for just the fire department. Moving all the department employees to the high deductible plan provides an additional annual savings of three hundred and twenty thousand dollars based on the estimates from the budget director. These savings alone fund virtually all of the union's proposal. We understand from a budget presentation and documents prepared by the budget director, that, that it is a particularly imposs, an impossibility to separate the fire department from the self-insurance plan. That means that absent agreement, the city may be forced to return everyone to a self-insurance plan. The budget director calculated the additional cost that between, at between one point five and one point eight million dollars annually. An agreement with IFF Local Thirty-Two will allow the city to avoid that self-inflicted financial catastrophe. The salary increases we propose are identical to the increases we proposed before the arbitrator's award, and are consistent with what the police union receives. We also propose that the city pay time and a half, the regular rate, whatever firefighter works, be on their regular schedule, that is consistent with every other unionized employee in the city. Every other un-unionized employee in the city receives overtime pay of one and a half whenever they work beyond their regular schedule. We seek the exact same treatment. The additional cost of the proposal is easy to calculate, it is one-half of the current overtime budget, or three hundred and seventy thousand dollars based on current figures in your proposed budget. We also propose that firefighters in the self-insurance high deductible plan have no premium contribution. There is a simple explanation, this is consistent with the move to the lower-cost high deductible plan. That lower cost more than offsets the elimination in contribution towards premiums. The city's budget documents peg that cost at eighty-seven thousand dollars annually, but it is also a reaction to the city's announcement that it intends to raise the premiums equivalent by thirty percent. That is un, that is an unprecedented increase. For many years, the city and the unions had a health insurance committee that mutually reviewed proposals for premium increases. That committee was very successful, annual premium increases never exceeded ten percent when the committee was in place. That was true, even though the city's commercial insurance providers routinely demanded much higher premium increases. The health insurance committee routinely found that, that the way of lower cost, the proposed increases. Unless and until we return to that collaborative model with a proven track record, we cannot agree to give the city a free ride in setting its own premiums equivalent that affects the amount of the employees paid towards the premiums. In sum, this proposal will allow functionality and stability at an affordable price, it will also avoid the chaos the city created when it acted unilaterally in changing to self-insurance without the union's agreement. If the proposal is acceptable, I will direct the union council to prepare a tentative agreement. If not, we will continue forward with interest arbitration and the enforcement of health insurance arbitration award, which will scuttle the city's self-insurance plan for all city employees. Absent agreement, this proposal expires once the city's budget process is completed, and you'll see that the agreement is attached. Now, to the point of Corporation Counsel Borrell's explanation. So this is from the attorney, Ron Dunn, who's senior counsel to the, to the attorney forum that represents part, part of the fire department. So it says, and this is addressed to Tommy, Thomas Carcon, who's the union president, says, Dear Tom, you have asked us to summarize the effective health insurance arbitration award. Next step in light of that award, and how that fits with the upcoming interest arbitration. Here's the summary of the award. The award itself is quite simple. First, the arbitrator held that the collective bargaining agreement was violated because any change from commercial health insurance to self-insurance required agreement by parties, and the union did not agree. The arbitrator based that on the ambiguous contract language, the reality, the reality that self-insurance is legally and practically different from commercial health insurance, and the history of the parties' negotiations that acknowledged that agreement was required before any change. Based on all these factors, the arbitrator held the city violated the agreement and ordered the restoration of the status quo. Here, that means restoring the commercial health insurance plan. The city's entire defense was based on the argument that the only difference between the commercial health insurance and self-insurance is the cost, because the city replicated the benefits. The arbitrator rejected that argument citing to multiple cases that hold that there is a fundamental difference between self-insurance and commercial insurance. The arbitrator cited to Purb case that explicitly hold that a change to self-insurance is a mandatory subject bargaining, must be negotiated to agreement, because they are different. Here, the parties did negotiate a specific clause that contemplated future proposals during the life of the contract, but conditioned any change in agreement. In other words, the parties legally and properly negotiated clause that required agreement is a precondition to any change. That made the legal analysis very straightforward. The arbitrator merely required the parties to follow the exact deal they made. Once the arbitrator found that the city violated the agreement with unilateral change, she ordered make whole relief. Here, the arbitrator correctly, correctly identified that by violating the agreement, the city removed a bargaining chip from the union in their negotiations. Having found that, she ordered that commercial health insurance plan be restored unless the union and the city reach an alternative agreement before December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three. Absent agreement, the city must restore the commercial plans. That restores the bargaining chip which the city sought to remove. Likelihood of a success of a court challenge. Arbitration awards are final and binding, they are not subject to an appeal like a court case. Rather than, can only be overturned on very limited grounds such as a technical issue in how the award was rendered. Improper conduct or fraud by the arbitrator or parties, or the award violates public policy, is irrational or clearly exceeds the arbitrator's authority. None of those grounds apply here. The award was technically correct, there was no improper conduct in the hearing of any kind by any party or the arbitrator. There is no credible basis for the city to argue that the award violates public policy, was irrational, or violates some law. In this case, based entirely on explicit contract language, such, such an argument would need to show that the party's contract itself contained a clause which is illegal. No such argument can be made here. To the contrary of the law, self-insurance is legally different from commercial health insurance. That is why Purb has held that any change must be negotiated. Put differently, a clause in the argument requiring negotiation and agreement before a change to self-insurance is consistent with public policy, not against public policy. Now, the effect on interest arbitration. It is highly unlikely that any interest arbitration would render an award that allowed the city to avoid the clear contract language requiring agreement. That is particularly true where the arbitrator has so clearly and decisively found that the city violated the agreement by acting unilaterally in the process, took away a bargaining chip. Even absent other factors, that alone makes it very unlikely that an interest arbitrator would simply disregard the arbitrator's decision and allow the city to avoid the contract clause absent specific union agreement. Changes in healthcare insurance are frequently the subject of interest arbitrations, but in every, every such case, there is a trade-off between money and changes, and the way the interest arbitrator process is an extension of negotiations, trading one thing for another. That is quite different from just allowing the city to make a change for nothing in return. But there is another, another complication that makes any change without union consent even more or less likely. Absent Pacific, absent specific consent from both parties, an interest arbitrator award covers only two years. That is a statutory limitation. Here, that means April first, two thousand twenty, through March thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two, the city's change occurred on April first, two thousand twenty-two. Thus, absent agreement by the union, the impasse arbitrator has no jurisdiction to order something to occur after the term covered by a two-year reward. Combining these factors, it becomes immediately obvious that the absent agreement by the union and the city will not succeed in accomplishing an interest arbitration, what they have already tried and failed to accomplish unilaterally. Financial consequences. Multiple budget documents prepared by the city budget director have revealed that it is a practical impossibility for the city to maintain the self-insurance plan unless all fire department employees are included in the pool. Those budget documents peg the cost of returning back to a commercial health insurance plan at between one point five and one point eight million dollars annually. That is a, that is a financial catastrophe to the city. The city leaders have been told repeatedly by impartial officials unrelated to the local, that they were likely to lose health insurance, a health, to lose a health insurance grievance, it would not succeed in getting the interest arbitration panel to overturn or ignore an arbitrator's decision and award. Those predictions have now become a reality. Future strategy. The only path forward that the city, that, to the city that makes sense is to strike an agreement with the local, which allows the city to lock in the self-insurance plan. That gives a local a great deal of leverage. We think that the locals should continue to press for, for an agreement. That benefits everyone, the city, the Local Thirty-Two union members, and the city, other city employees that are innocent victims of the city's self-inflicted wound in the taxpayers. It is always better to take the high road and remain rational and reasonable, even if the other side is not. That is especially true in this instance. So I think that's, you know, extremely important, you know, for us, again, when moving forward with this budget, that it, 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 it's very self-explanatory for the fact that even, even if that agreement, that argument goes forward, that, that they're already past that, that two-year, that two-year process, again. I think that the, the city has been willing to give the, the, the city, again, another proposal to accept.
Can you just sum it up, some other people?
Yeah, sure, and I, and I appreciate that lengthy, that lengthy post, but I think it's, it's important, you know, to put that into the record, you know, that, that we have received those, those type of, those type of, of responses from other attorneys.
Mark, you have a form.
So I've got a question.
No, I know, that's what I was doing.
So it said on the bottom of that, that it's, it's unappeal, you, you can't appeal that, right?
He's wrong.
It's a what?
He's wrong.
He's wrong, so someone's wrong. So either way, if this keeps on getting delayed, 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 you talk another year and a half, two years of constantly getting through all the things, either way, it's going to end up on the next administration's lap, right? Like a steaming turd, I guess you would call it. So, is that bad for the morale, for the fire department?
I, I can't answer that, I, I don't know what they've been told.
After five years of not getting paid and not catching up, I mean-
Well, they have been paid.
Have they been paid? I mean, I mean, I mean, they're paying-
They continue to get paid under the old con, under their old contract.
Okay.
But they're not getting paid.
They're two years out.
It's just bad for morale, after a while, it's kind of bad for morale, ain't it? Isn't it kind of bad for morale after a while? I mean, it's just sitting at a standstill, we're going to appeal the process, appeal the process until the new mayor comes in, and then it's going to fall on their lap, whoever that is. Is that how it's going, is that, is that the strategy of this administration, maybe?
I, I don't believe that's the strategy of the administration, I know our strategy, the Corporation Counsel's office is what I laid out for you. Again, we knew that we would be, we wouldn't succeed at Purb, you never do, as a, as a municipality, okay? We did know that, you know, our, our chances of success are pretty good in the appellate division. That's where we go from there. We've checked with outside counsel too, so-
So this guy is wrong what he said on-
Absolutely. And don't get me wrong, Ron Dunn's a very gifted, very good attorney, he's from Utica, all right? Great guy, but he's been wrong before, okay? So, it, it's-
Have you been wrong before, Bill?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
All right, well, no, that's what I'm saying, just to hit the bottom line, you know, we suffer, you know, we take care of our troops, you know, that's what we do, we got to take care of our troops. I mean, I don't know, we're not doing this, I just don't get it.
Wait a minute, Mark, you're all set?
I'm all set.
Frank?
I'm all set.
I, I know you feel that, you know, you're gonna win the case, but in, in past, when they had perb rulings, whether it be with the fire department or police department, whatever it may have been with, and they ruled, and you went to court on it, you were successful every time?
We normally, we, we normally don't appeal perb rulings because they're insignificant. Disciplinary hearings, we don't, a lot of discipline stuff goes to perb, okay? We don't appeal those just because it's not worth it. This one, we, when we took the position that we were gonna do the self-insurance, we did a, a great deal of research, several attorneys, and like, and again, just because we wanted to make sure we were correct, we went to outside counsel, very knowledgeableness, out of the area, okay? They looked at it and said, absolutely. So, yeah, that, that's why, the play for us was always the appellate division, I mean, it's no secret, we've told people.
All right.
Councilman, you all set? We got one more?
Yeah. One more. So, let me ask you, if we were on the first year of the mayor, if this, this wasn't his last year, let's say he had two years left, think you'd have the same strategy you got now? You think he would gamble on what he's gambling at if he had another, another year?
Joe, I don't speak for the mayor.
Okay, but I'm asking you, I'm asking you, do you think he would?
Well, gentlemen, this is...
No, I know, I'm just saying.
This is a conversation that you should have with the mayor, Joey, not, not with...
No, well, he's, he's a lawyer.
He's not gonna answer that.
Well, no, I'm the Corporation Counsel, but, so...
I'm just saying, it, to me, to me, it doesn't, it, it just doesn't sit right with me. The way you guys, the way it's going, we're gonna go here, we're gonna go there, and before you know it, it's December 31st, and it's on three of the four people in this room's shoulders. To me, that doesn't seem right. That's just my opinion, I have a right to my opinion.
You do.
I just, and, this'll be my last conversation, I know I'm long-winded, so I apologize, but...
No, I'll say the same thing.
The only, the only thing that I, I will ask, and I, and I know Ron Dunn's been a labor attorney for, for a number of years, I think 40-something plus years, so I think that he has knowledge and experience bringing forward to that. So I guess, Bill, I know you are not a labor attorney, you are part of the, the city's Corporation Counsel, and you had stated that you, you consulted outside attorneys inside the city. So, as an attorney yourself, going forward, would you feel more comfortable you representing the, the case, or whoever's bringing it forward, or, or an actual labor attorney, if you think that you're so, if they're so confident? And who, who's doing the representation of, of the, of the appeal?
Our offices, and it would be, it's Joe McBride and Seth Warren, who have got it.
Which neither have labor, or, or, like, they have labor experience, and, and how long? For Joe McBride?
Joe McBride's been an attorney, what, for 25 years?
So he should know the law, out of anybody, right?
Joe should know the law.
Well, I, I hope that he knows the law all the way around, other than labor.
Well, I know he does, so...
Very well, and he's an excellent attorney.
Ask a question. I know you're gonna meet with the arbitrator on May 9th, 10th?
May 8th and May 10th, I believe it is.
Okay. They're gonna make a ruling on that day, I probably won't announce it. If there's no ruling, you'll state your case, they'll state their case, or...
So, no, we have a negotiating team, okay? So it's Andy LaLanne, he's a labor attorney, okay, as well as Butch Ventura, okay? So those are the two that handle all the labor negotiations for the city of Utica on our behalf. So those are the two that are gonna be going there.
Okay, so, the union will state their case, city will state their case, and the arbitrator will rule from that point forward, there will be no other discussions, and it may be six months down the road, and he may award whatever financial, yeah.
I, I, I believe, like, the perb decisions are usually, like, this one was pretty quick, so 30, 45 days usually, maybe 60, if he needs more time.
And it'll only be for the two years that are...
Right, which still isn't violation.
Yeah.
Hold on, hold on, Councilmember, uh, bermess you hit before.
Heather, I have a question for you. If we can't come up with this 1.5 or this 1.8 million dollar difference, and we can't take it out of the budget, that's gonna be a 5.62% tax rate increase for our constituents, which comes off to be about $112 per person. But, I mean, are we gonna, are the citizens gonna be happy with that?
So, it, it's our perspective that the self-insurance is exactly the same as the health insurance that we have. There is no, there is no difference, no difference. The only difference is the additional cost that we get to pay an insurance company, right? The 1.5 to 1.8. So to your question, no change in coverage, right? Because part of it, and, and he can't say this, right, because he's an attorney, but the question becomes, what's actually the damages? What's the damage to a, a, a union member for the fire department by us doing, going to self-insurance?
So it's a fire department's fault?
And so, and so, and so...
Samantha, would you please let her finish?
You asked the question about the cost, right? If, if, if that was to happen during this budget, this next budget year, it would have to come from fund bills. It would have to come from fund bills, unless we found somewhere else to cut.
And then going forward, instead of taking out a fund bill, eventually would be an increase in taxes for the constituents.
Um, Councilmember, I just want, go ahead, Frankie, you just want someone...
Before we close, I don't know if we're gonna be closing, see people picking up. Are we gonna have a special meeting before the 15th?
That's what I, I just wanna see if there's any...
I think we should have it on the 14th at, uh, 5:00 PM?
Hold on, if there's any amendments, okay?
That's, I think it's party, that...
Is this party thing?
Yeah.
If there's any amendments, they have to be, please submit your amendments, they have to be in proper form, to our city clerk. If there's no amendments, then we won't move forward from there, all right?
I had a different suggestion that I wanted to offer to the council. I don't mean it's a Tuesday thing, but the meeting's the 15th.
Yep.
Typically, in the past, what I did is schedule a special meeting that was just provisional, two or three days after the final meeting. And then if we didn't need the meeting, we didn't need it.
We can only cancel it.
I think that's a good idea.
That's, that's typically what I've done in the past, so I could, if, if, 'cause I know there's a lot of St. Patrick's Day stuff going, there's all kinds of stuff going on there next week, even though the parade's this week.
Yep.
I don't know what anyone's involved in, but we could technically do that special meeting for Monday on the 20th at 5:00 PM, and it would still be legal, it would be fine. I don't know what the body is thinking as far as amendments and all that stuff, but it would still be two meetings.
I submitted amendments.
The only thing that I asked...
Well, so hang on.
Is that we at least have access to Munus, there's a couple of things...
Don't worry about that right now, I'm talking about the scheduling.
Well, it's, because I need it.
Right, but my, my point is this, then, if there were amendments and people were concerned, we wouldn't have to vote on the budget then.
I think that's a great idea.
We could still do it.